Okay, it is 6:30. So we're gonna go ahead and reconvene an open session. At which point, we'll now find where I'm at. Okay, actions taken in closed session. Trustee Wright.
I have three public reports of action taken during closed session. First one is, on a seven to zero vote, the board took action in closed session to discipline a classified administrator. The second one, on a seven to zero vote, the board in closed session voted to issue notice of rejection of claim regarding claim number five, seven, two, nine, three, nine, pursuant to government code section nine, one, three. The governing board further authorized the chancellor or her designee to issue any appropriate notices. And the last one is, on a seven to zero vote, the board took action in closed session to accept a settlement agreement with a former classified employee pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, seven, period, seven, A, three. Under the terms of the agreement, the former employee agreed to waive her rights to contest disciplinary action and tendered her resignation in exchange for three months of wages and benefits at her former rate.
Thank you. So next, we have invocation led by trustee Milchker and then the pledge allegiance led by myself.
As we gather here tonight, let us be mindful of our student service to our students and our community. Let us use our resources wisely and well, represent all members of our community fairly, and make decisions that promote the common good. As we begin this new year, help us to be extra patient and kind to others. Let us always recognize the good work of our professors, administrators, and staff. Let us trust them to guide our students as they prepare them for exciting futures. We are truly blessed to be part of such illustrious and innovative institutions, and let us pray for peace. Amen.
Okay, please join me in saluting our flag.
(Inaudible)
I don't see any slips, so no requests tonight. So then we'll move on to board reports. I'll start down here with trustee Lang, if he's willing and able and ready.
My comments will be very short tonight. I just would like to wish everybody a very happy new year. May it be one filled with joy, success, and good health. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Jay.
I attended the start of the professional development week on Tuesday, January 7th, at IVC with breakfast and the president's opening session. IVC's acting president, Dr. Cindy Visca-Chill, gave an inspiring introduction to the theme "Operationalizing Equity at IVC," giving her version of equity and diversity and at the community college, citing her own life experiences, which was very interesting. IVC student Sarah Loria sang two opening songs, which were much appreciated by the audience. Dr. Visca-Chill then introduced the keynote speaker, Dr. Suzanne Pendakar, the chief learning officer and director of the Equity Institute of the University of Southern California Race and Equity Center. Dr. Pendakar then gave an excellent presentation on her theme, "No Time for Spectators: Your Sphere of Influence." She brought out some interesting statistics, students in the California community colleges, which gave insight into the issues of diversity and equity in the California education. After lunch, I attended a faculty discussion on operationalizing equity in the classroom led by Dr. Daniel D. Rowlett, the acting dean of liberal arts at IVC. He gave an excellent presentation and led the group discussion. I then attended the open house of the IVC Services Supporting Equity. In the evening, I attended the part-time faculty dinner and presentation, "What is Guided Pathways and How It Will Help Our Students?" On Wednesday, January 8th, I attended Saddleback College Student Success and Magic of the Progress Reports, presented by the accounting professor, Jane Medling. Her theme emphasized how student success can be increased through utilization of the progress reports. She pointed out that progress reports are making a difference in the lives of our students and that engagement with the faculty is critical to student success. She further said that doing progress reports showed students that you care and give faculty an easy and systematic way to communicate with students regarding attendance, class participation, missing or incomplete coursework, current grades, or overall performance. Professor Medling made enthusiastic and compelling case for the use of progress reports. I really enjoyed this, her message. I got really enthusiastic about it. Then I was off to Irvine College to attend the Faculty Association luncheon. I'm preparing and looking forward to the CCLC meeting at the end of this month in Sacramento. I want to take congratulations to the South Orange County Community College District and Saddleback College for winning the Energy and Sustainability Award from the California Community College Board of Governors. The award honors top exemplary campus energy projects that demonstrate excellence in annual energy cost savings and environmental sustainability and job creation. I also want to congratulate Chancellor Burke. She was selected to serve as a board, as a board, a director on the Orange County Business Council. Congratulations.
Okay. I will go ahead and do mine. I also attended the president's opening session at IVC. Unfortunately, I could not make the Saddleback one, as my schedule did not permit, but I was asked to give the opening remarks on behalf of the board, and so I was happy to do that. It was very interesting, the speaker Pendakar's presentation. I took one thing out of it that I thought I'd share. She showed a slide that has two effects for me. One was that it showed in children's books in 2018, 1% representation of African, I'm sorry, American Indian first natives, 5% Latinx, 7% Asian Pacific Islander, Asian Pacific American, 10% African or African American, 27% animal/other, which is more than the others total. Animals represent more than all those other groups, and then 50% white, and of that, 75% are male. So that was very impactful for me to see that, and you know, here it's 2018, and that's, those are new children's books with those statistics. But then on a technology aspect, as I was taking a picture of the slide, it popped up on my phone, a Google link to the website of the organization that put together that data. And it freaked me out. So that was it. So that's my report.
All right. I too attended Saddleback College opening session. Well done Elliot, and then Ryan and the team at Saddleback and the Faculty Association lunch with Kurt and the faculty at IVC. That was great. We had our board self-evaluation a few days ago, a few days ago.
Last week.
Last week. I think it was a productive session. We reviewed our goals and how we go about trying to achieve those goals, and I think we had, it was an open session, so you all were welcome to attend, so it was a good discussion. Next, this Sunday, I'm flying up to Sacramento with some of my colleagues and the chancellor, I think Letitia as well, to do some lobbying in Sacramento on behalf of the district, so hopefully that will go well on Monday. And then lastly, some of you probably heard that the Calbright, things have not gone well at Calbright, the online community college. I'll be honest, I was not surprised to hear that the president is no longer, Heather Hiles is no longer in charge at Calbright. Cronyism doesn't work. And it was a bad start for Calbright. Bad decisions were made by a lot of people. It's not a surprising ending to her tenure. There's still time to salvage Calbright. I think there's a role for it, but they've got a lot of thinking to do, and that board's got to pay attention. It's a very bad beginning. You don't start a college like that with that kind of funding and engage in cronyism right off the bat, and it didn't work. So there's time. Hopefully, they'll fix it, because I think there's a role for an online college in this state. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Wright.
Yes, I did also attend seven different events as part of the professional development flex week. I started out on Tuesday, January 7th, going to Saddleback College and for their breakfast, and then also for listening to President Dr. Elliot Stern. He did a wonderful job. I then went, drove over to IVC and attended their opening session and was able to listen to Dr. Suman Pendakar, the keynote speaker, on putting equity into operation at IVC. I then drove back to Saddleback College and attended the Math, Science, and Engineering Division luncheon, which was good. I have a lot of friends there. Also, on Wednesday, I attended the Geek Report at Irvine Valley College. They did a wonderful job. And then also attended the Faculty Association luncheon. On Thursday, I attended the Irvine Valley College Light Buffet for faculty and administrators, and then stayed and went to the IVC vice president's welcome. So I did attend several events at that time. I just wanted to report that things are going very well. This last weekend, this is sort of personal, I was able to go up and honor three of my grandsons, 16, 14, and 11. Two of them won the Eagle Scout Awards on Sunday, and one of them got the Cub Scout Highest Award of Light, Arrow of Light. So had a good weekend with my three grandsons.
Congratulations.
Trustee Milchker.
Okay, I hope, I hope all of you have had an enjoyable holiday and an inspiring start to the new year 2020. There's lots of puns about 2020 to start out the new year with a chuckle, but you could only understand a 2020 joke in hindsight, that I thought. And I won't repeat some of the other comments made by some of my colleagues, but what I gleaned from the professional development week presentation I intended was, as I intended earlier during my invocation, we have a magnificent staff here. I love catching staff members hard at work and thanking them for their contributions to our colleges. I actually created a spreadsheet of events that I attended at both professional development weeks at both colleges. So this is a few of the best things I attended. Saddleback College's president's opening session and IVC's president's opening session will the end of that. The IVC faculty equity discussion, the tour of IVC Services Supporting Equity, the Geek Report, the faculty lunch, and IVC's president classified staff lunch. Our classified staff are working incredibly hard and are very engaged. They're the first persons that our students meet, and they are vital for our student success. Classified Senate was started here at Saddleback College. I'm very proud of that. I truly appreciate the professors who assemble Flex Week and really ask them to do their best so that both president addresses aren't at the same time during next Flex Week, so that board members can attend both of them. And I thought I'd mention that some great arts events coming up at both colleges. So all you do is you go to either IVC or Saddleback and type in arts, and the arts events will pop up, and they're really good events coming up. There are plays at both colleges, lots of presentations, and one that seemed very interesting to me is called Bloom at Saddleback College. It's exploring California ecology through dance theater, and it's a multi-group event from the ecology department and the dance department and the writing department and the horticulture department, putting on this presentation, and I'm so glad that our staff works together so well, and I'm looking forward to that presentation. It will be February 5th to 8th. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to wish you a productive happy new year. I don't know about you, but I feel my best when I'm productive, and I think my students did too. I did attend the self-evaluation for our board. As trustee Jamel said, it was very productive. For me, it also was informative to help me understand where our goals are, meaning where we're going with our students and what is the focus that we need to share, and also in to meet our community needs. When we are meeting our goals, I believe it just waves out into the community. I also attended, it was fun, I attended the Saddleback Foundation Holiday Gathering last week. We were all so busy before Christmas and the holidays that we met last week. It was very, very nice, very elegant, very social, and when we go to meetings, there's an agenda and we've got to get through it, and before long, everybody's gone, and it was a very nice evening to network and to enjoy our friends and our colleagues. I also wanted to share one of the emails that I got from the state and the state chancellor's office, and I just want to share those, we'll start here in this room, is that a census is going to be collected come April, and it stressed how important it was for our community college students to fill out that census, because with those numbers, we will be receiving funding. So if you, you know, just share it with one other person, we've got 100, and ask them to share it, that we really need to encourage our students to fill it out. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor's report.
Student trustee.
Oh, student trustee. Sorry.
Good evening, everyone. I just would like to say, to wish a happy new year, and I just would like to say that I'm looking forward to meet with ASG representatives from both colleges, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, to team up and keep contributing with initiatives and efforts in the best interest of all the students. Thank you.
Now chancellor's report.
And I'd like to hold my comments until we do the legislative review, because I'm going to have some comments about the Higher Education Reauthorization Act.
Okay. College presidents' reports. Who would like to go first?
I have to go first.
Mike?
Mike.
Just one thing to highlight from my written report and one thing to add. So I shared with you in the written report, our recent re-enrollment campaign. This was targeting students who had dropped from our roles anytime in the last three semesters. We started by sending them a warm and fuzzy "Think About Us, We're Thinking About You" letter, and then took it from there in terms of trying to get them back into school. When I created the written report for you a couple of weeks ago, we had about 300 new students who had come in through that campaign. We ended with almost 500 students coming into us from that campaign. I think the message is not just that we need to go back and reach out to students who we lose for any reason, but particularly that that student base somewhere in the middle that isn't coming right from high school, that isn't over in the emeritus range, that's a lost market opportunity for us and a lost part of our community that needs more service, and we want to really aim at that and look at this as a model for how to go forward. And then the other thing I wanted to report to you that didn't quite make written report, because it happened last week, was I had the pleasure of attending and supporting my team, led by Vice President Voe Kumamoto, who presented to the Capistrano Unified School District a new, long-term, very innovative dual enrollment plan that focuses not just on individual classes that we'll be offering, but rather whole programs, whole fields of study that will lead to credentials at Saddleback and potentially, in all cases, can lead into a baccalaureate degree. The three programs of study include one in automobile and engineering technology, another in communications and IT, and a third in business. And we'll start with a pilot in fall, very quickly, of 100 students, and then we'll move from there and scale it up quite quickly. But the school board received news of the project very well. We'll be coming to you with proposed modifications to C cap agreements as we add more and more classes to create these three programs of study. So we're very, very proud and very excited about that new deepening partnership with the USD, Capistrano Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I have no additions to the written report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have ASG. Start with Saddleback.
Is this thing on?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Quinn. I'm the Director of Human Resources and Volunteering at Saddleback College's Associated Student Government. Tonight, I'm going to be filling in for Jake Rizik to give the report, because he's unable to be here. With that being said, I'd like to bring awareness to what ASG has been involved in in the past month. To start, I'd like to announce that we have reached an upwards of 71 members in ASG, which is really record-breaking in our past. Likewise, I'd like to bring some awareness to our past executive retreat, which took place at the UCI Recreational Center on UCI campus on Thursday, January 9th. It took place with our president, vice president, our directors, and we invited some administrative coordinators who acted as second-in-command of some of our committees, as well as some ASG members. The retreat was very successful, and it taught team bonding activities and valuable life lessons that we'll most definitely be using in the future. Likewise, we had an all-members ASG retreat that took place on Friday, January 17th, at Saddleback College's campus. It was also a very successful event, and we'd like to commend and are very grateful for President Stern for being our guest speaker for the retreat. Thank you so much, President Stern. Likewise, I'd like to bring awareness to some upcoming events we have going on. Currently, we are looking at rooms for our personal reflection room. In the past, it was known as a meditation room, but we've amended the name to now-read personal reflection room, and we're hoping to have that room open by the end of February. Likewise, we are planning the election committee for our current general elections for executive member positions. We're looking to have informational sessions and campaigning to start with the month of February, for general elections to begin in March 2nd and end March 5th. Lastly, we are planning an event called Coaches vs. Cancer, which will be taking place February 19th between 4:30 PM to 6:00 PM in the Saddleback College Quad. It's going to take place with the Saddleback College Clubs, and they're going to be fundraising money through games and in-and-out from the Saddleback students, and all the proceeds will be going towards the American Cancer Foundation and society. With that being said, we're looking forward to a successful start to the new year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. ASIVC.
Good evening. I'll be filling in for Ross this evening, as he has a class that conflicts with this time. My name is Brianna Ross, and I am a senator at the Irvine Valley College Student Government, so I will be delivering his report. My report for you all tonight is that ASIVC has been focusing on preparing for the spring semester. In doing so, we have just held our comprehensive training for all student leaders, where we worked on reconstructing our student government to work more efficiently, as well as plan events for the semester. Furthermore, to complete our main objective of delivering on our promises for OCTA, the ASIVC president and our student leaders have been meeting with the acting president, vice president of student services, vice president of, and vice president of finance, to break down the non-academic barriers of transportation for our students at an affordable cost. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we don't have any board requests for reports, so we'll move on to the first discussion item, one of two, starting with state and federal legislative priorities for 2020.
Oh, bottom. Okay, my apologies. Good evening, honorable trustees. It's my pleasure to present to you this evening our 2020 proposed legislative priorities. As you may remember, last year, we did this for the first time, setting some priorities to help guide us throughout the year on our advocacy efforts, but also to make it easier for staff and students when they visit legislators at the local, state, and federal levels to have talking points in hand, primarily what you desire to focus on throughout the year, and to help guide their discussions moving forward, and to ensure that it's more focused. We don't have many changes. I explained to you why priorities are important last year, but you may remember that we did this process in April last year, which was a little late in the legislative session. This year, we're hoping to get a little bit more of a head start on that in attempting to adopt these priorities before we do our visits in January, and that's when most of us attend the CCLC Legislative Conference and when we do the majority of our visits with our legislators in Sacramento. I know some of you attend different events throughout the year in DC, and then also meet with legislators at the local level throughout the year, so there's an opportunity to use a document like this throughout the year, but we would really love for these priorities to be adopted before we make our visits in January to the majority of our delegation. So not much has changed in terms of priorities this year, still focused on financial aid and college affordability, support of the 2020 education ballot measure, Proposition 13, 2020, not to be confused with the other Prop 13, and also non-academic barriers for students, with a focus on affordable housing or housing in general. It's a main barrier for students, but it's also something that the state has really focused on, and we intend that they will continue to focus on housing in 2020. Also, cities and other local jurisdictions are really focused on how to address homelessness, and so that offers a wide net to address non-academic barriers for our students as well, and really allows for some opportunities to have more discussions with our legislators around an issue that they care about as well. At the federal level, still looking to keep an eye out for deferred action for childhood arrival, otherwise known as DACA, workforce for 21st century, the Higher Education Act reauthorization, which the chancellor may speak to tonight as well, veterans affairs, and apprenticeships. And if there aren't any major changes, we're looking to support most of these initiatives, and as the chancellor mentioned, she might address some of the nuances that have changed with HEA that we should be aware of, and whether we want to take a full support or support is amended, or just kind of keep an eye out on some of the major changes.
Okay, so what I want to do is go ahead and give you guys a heads up to get 6.1 ready for discussion and vote, so that we can, since this is dealing with that, we'll just go straight to that after this.
Okay, great.
Okay, so I did want to talk a little bit about the Higher Ed Act reauthorization. I have a letter in front of me, and this is a public letter, it's posted on their website, from what we call CRAC, which is the Council of Regional Accrediting Commissions. And we call it CRAC because if you take the hyphen out, the acronym would be CRAC, so that's why it's CRAC. They do have some concerns about the Higher Ed Reauthorization Act as it's been proposed. In particular, and higher education, they, they work on accreditation of over 3,000 institutions of higher education, and in that process, as you all know, as you've been involved in accreditation, they look at things such as graduation rates, transfers, enrollment patterns, cohort default rates, and completion rates. But this new legislation would change that and require accreditors to focus only on two main outcomes, completion and workforce participation. And more difficult than that is they would require a one-size-fits-all approach. So it wouldn't matter if you were a rural, a small rural college, or primarily a career technical college, whatever the accreditor selected as those benchmarks, you would be held to. So they would apply, and they would be numeric, specific numeric benchmarks for an institution, with little or no consideration of an institution's mission, student population... student population, or current performance. So for example, if an accreditor chooses to use a six-year graduation rate as the measure for four-year institutions and sets a 60% benchmark for the measure, it would have to apply that performance level to all four-year institutions, despite what could be wide variation in the performance level and who they serve. So CRAC is recommending that that language be changed. In addition to forcing this one-size-fits-all benchmarks, the legislation empowers the Secretary of Education to determine whether the levels are too low. It doesn't allow the Secretary of Education to revise them, but it can force the accreditors to do so. And as you know, the Secretary of, setting aside the Secretary of Education and how that individual is currently occupying the office, those are political appointments, which is why it's not a great idea to put those decisions in their hands. So it would also direct accreditors to develop a process when an institution doesn't meet the benchmark or the standard related to student achievement and could open the door to federal intervention in the accreditation process and to the federal government dictating sanctions. So because of all of these concerns, I think we want to keep an eye on this legislation. Even though it was proposed out of the House and it's about college affordability, which we're all very concerned about, we have to look at all of the elements of the recommended legislation before we do a full support. So I will actually forward a copy of this letter to all of you because there are a lot of details in it.
You're going to forward that? Okay, we were just asking where we can see that.
Yeah, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, so with that, then is it, when we have it in our, if you can go back to the previous slide. For legislative priorities, you have Higher Education Act reauthorization. That's not saying whether we support it or not. It just means it's going to be a focus.
Right, in the document, we just kind of explain that we're going to keep an eye on it. We're going to be engaged in watching this legislation move through the process. So in outlining the priorities, it doesn't say whether we take a formal position opposing or supporting it. And thankfully, we have the chancellor who has a really insightful perspective because of her service on the ACCJC that we can get this additional information. Every community college district is not keeping a close eye on HEA in the way that she's articulated. So we're fortunate that she has that insight. So I think it makes even more sense for us to keep it on our priorities, to just keep an eye on it and maybe have a really big hand in informing our legislators of why they need to pay attention to those particular nuances regarding accreditation.
Sure, okay, thank you. All right, so with that, we'll, unless anybody has any questions on the presentation.
I don't think she's done yet.
Oh.
Just a couple more slides.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I did want to mention that we are not far into the legislative session, but already very active in terms of we're starting up the Orange County Legislative Task Force, which our trustee Milchaker serves on that task force and always is very engaged. But we're trying to increase our engagement even on the local legislative task force in that we're bringing partners that we have good relationships with, such as OCBC. We have Jesse, who's coming soon to present to the entire task force. And he actually expressed an interest in learning more about our platform as a task force, but more specifically what our district is prioritizing. So we were able to share with him last year our priorities. He really appreciated the document. We would plan to do that again, but we feel like we're adding value to the task force in being able to bring our partners and have a more robust discussion about what we can do regionally and countywide and particularly around issues like housing and non-academic barriers. Also, we all are preparing to go to Sacramento in January at the end of this weekend. And then also, we're in gear with planning with the ASGs at both colleges for the student advocacy trips. We were able to just do a trip with Saddleback last year. IVC has mentioned in their strategic plan that they would like to also conduct a trip. So we're happy to help them plan that and attend if needed and just guide them through the process. And we found that it's been extremely valuable and an educational process as well. Other advocacy activities, supporting fundraising efforts with the statewide bond and mechanisms that we're allowed to do outside of work hours, of course, and with foundation support, not general fund support from the district, and just continuing to strengthen our partnerships with cities and different organizations, as I mentioned. Still talking about pushing mental health funding that you might have seen through the resolution on the agenda this evening, reiterating what the Orange County School Board Association is pushing with the Orange County Board of Supervisors to release that mental health funding to school districts so that we can utilize them to serve our students in a more robust way in terms of mental health. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you. This is an item for you to vote on. Last year, we presented it and then brought it back for you to vote on the priorities. This year, we have it simultaneously. So it is available for you to vote on and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. I have a request to speak from trustee Jamal.
Thank you, thank you, Letitia.
Sure.
Couple, one comment. It's an unfortunate proposition number for the education.
It sure is.
It's really awful.
Couldn't have been worse.
Proposition 13, it's, you know, folks should know Prop 13. It holds down our commercial and residential property taxes here in the state. Been in place since the late 70s and it's causing a lot of confusion. I'm getting a lot of questions about it.
Sure.
So that's one. Two, one is, a second question is really process. And we bring this up every year and I don't know that we ever make a real decision on this. How do we, as a board, decide to take a position on a legislative issue, either state or federal, even locally? We don't have a Legislative Affairs Committee, as you probably, you know, cities. Some cities do, some don't, some other public jurisdictions do. What, my understanding of our process is that the issue comes to the, either through you or the chancellor, our lobbyists, to your attention and then it filters through the board president and then we determine whether we sign on to the letter or we bring it to the full board. Is that still the process?
Yes, that's correct. That's pretty much still the process where, and it's not just from our lobbyists that we get inquiries. Sometimes it's from staff.
Right.
Last year, from President Prendergast, he told us about, told us about a really important bill that we really made a huge change. I mean, not just for our district, but for every district to ensure that we weren't wrapped up in that bill to have to forego own property to housing, basically to the state, before we had a chance to decide what we were going to do with it. So yeah, inquiries come from all over and it pretty much is a process with the chancellor and the president to decide on how to move forward. A lot of that is based on what we're already focusing on, so the priorities help. But I think if there was all, any suggestion for a change, I would think that it would go maybe to the executive board first and then the board.
Thank you. I guess my just question to the board, are we okay with this process? Do we need to change it? Should we continue it as is? We have discussed the formation of a Government Affairs Legislative Committee in the past. I think some community college districts have one, some don't. Just raise it for everyone on the board.
I guess my only thing is, you know, it's one of those, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Is it, do you have a problem with the way we're doing it now? Or is it, I mean, my personal take on it is present, when I'm sitting in the position is I would be very reluctant to speak on behalf of the board on something I didn't know that we had already all kind of, like I have a sense of what we, what we've talked about in the past and what we, without that, I would say it has to come to the board. Like you either have to have a special meeting or roll it into the next meeting. And I think as long as the president operates in that regard and we've empowered our legislative group at the district level to kind of have that same sense of what the board's priorities are, which is part of this process, I mean.
I'm not proposing a change. I just thought it'd be, you know, to always an inflection point every year to bring it up.
It's a good discussion to have on an annual basis. If we see a problem, we should try and fix it, but I haven't seen anything yet.
Trustee Jamal, I'll note that we always ask who else has supported or opposed a certain bill so we kind of can understand like-minded districts or districts that are similar to ours in size or make up, you know, a budget formulation. But we also ask about controversy. We look at different articles that may talk about a certain bill. So we try to prep the chancellor to talk to the president with all of the information possible so that if we're proposing a support or opposition position, you know, all the controversy that comes with it, you know, all of the other districts that are maybe in support or opposition of it. So you can make a very clear decision. And that's usually what we would discuss during a legislative committee meeting. It's kind of all of the parameters outside of the black and white text in a piece of draft legislation.
Fair enough. One specific question on legislation. So there's a proposed budget and I'm wondering, I know they're going to go through a process in the Assembly and the Senate, the variety of hearings before the May revise. Are we putting in place any strategy now? I guess, because we have visits coming up on Monday, to address any of the budget items that might impact our district in particular? Like for example, there is some money in there for food pantries. We just had a board had a tour of the food pantries here and at IVC. So is that, is that something where we'd put in place a legislative advocacy strategy now? Or are we, we're going to wait?
I think we shouldn't wait. That is something I probably need to discuss with Chancellor, Vice Chancellor Gable. But we actually did have a CCL, CCLC call today and they talked about some of the advocacy efforts that they want us to address in the budget in particular. And so we almost can kind of carve out some of those points and see what makes sense for us as a district. But we can probably even tailor down on that a little bit more.
And then, do you want to say something?
Sure, I would think one of the things that we can say is, you know, it's a relatively decent budget for community colleges. It's not extravagant, but there are some funding in there. You know, COLA came in higher than what was anticipated. So I think that's always beneficial to us. You know, anytime we're meeting with the legislators, I always try to advocate if there's additional money to put it towards ongoing base increases. I think the other thing that we could advocate for would be PERS and STIRS liability offsets. You know, we received that in the past couple of years. That doesn't have to come out of Prop 198, but it does help all the districts. So that's something we could do. And then, you know, some, one of the things that I think I was disappointed in is the small amount that was available for deferred maintenance. So if there's any one-time funding, you know, we could advocate for additional deferred maintenance and then also mental health issues. This year, we received money out of Proposition 63, again, which is outside of Proposition 98. And if we can get that to be an ongoing source of funding, I think that would be beneficial. So if we wanted to advocate for the budget, those would be the things that I would say we would advocate for.
So is that, do you think that'll be part of our visits on Monday? Because we're going to be in Sacramento on Monday advocating for the district.
If you could, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we can create some talking points around all those items.
All right, just.
Good idea.
Yeah, and one final question, just locally. You did such a great job with taking us around to see the, get introduced and have resolutions, support of the, our district from various cities in our service area. Do you think that is something we'll do at an ad hoc basis? Or at the local level, should we be doing something like that every year? Should we be going to state of the city addresses that are cities that are in our service area?
Yeah, the plan is to have that local presence every year. And so the game plan this year was to actually ask of resolutions from the cities that didn't present to us last year so that we're not bombarding every city each and every year, but to kind of spread, spread the love, so to speak. So this year, we have about five or six cities that didn't make a presentation and shared an interest, but we couldn't make it work with the calendar to kind of fit that April is Community College Awareness Month. So we have some low-hanging fruit there. But yeah, the goal is to have a plan for local engagement because as you know, those local relationships are so important and there really are advocates throughout the year to our Assembly people and senators and Congress members and US senators as well. So yeah, the plan is to continue local engagement, whatever that looks like, whether that's proclamation presentations or attending various states of the cities. And you will start to see invitations to the various states of the cities. We're getting all of that information as we speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Whit, right up.
Yes, Letitia, I just wanted to ask you, other advocacy activities. We mentioned mental health and that's near to my heart because the need is great. But how are we trying to push that access for that money? Because I've been hearing it for so long that they have the money.
Yeah, that's such a good question. And up until now, it's kind of just been this very well-kept secret. We know the county has money, but there hasn't been a lot of advocacy around it because the relationships are good with our, with our board of supervisors. So trying to have those offline conversations, nothing really official in an ask, but it looks like now groups and organizations are moving toward a formal ask as we are doing something in a resolution this evening. The Orange County School Board Association did something similar. So I think we'll start to see institutions and bodies and organizations taking a formal position to request this funding and that it be spent in ways that we know as experts, you know, how it can be utilized. I think we're moving in that direction. Also, as Vice Chancellor Gable mentioned, you know, requesting that this, this funding be allocated in certain ways in the state budget. So I think moving forward, it's going to be more formal asks. And now that we know how the money can actually be used, our experts on the college campuses know how we can use the mental health funding. And so we'll be using those, that information to share with our legislators about how we can address this problem.
Can I just ask you, do you think it's because it's mental health?
There's still stigma associated, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, seeing no more requests to ask questions on this presentation, we will now look at 6.1. And while you're getting that ready, I will take a point of personal privilege to remind everyone if you're, remember that the food pantries, both colleges accept toiletries from hotels. That when we travel, we can bring those back. Sure.
The summer, I was in Ojai and I mentioned to one of the ladies and I want to tell you, she gave me a bag this big, or maybe I shouldn't say it, but it was this big. I mean, it's pretty heavy. And if anybody ever gets inclined to start cleaning out their bathroom, let me tell you how many toiletries you have and just throw it in a box. And I don't know, I would love to see student government do some type of collection. Way back when, when I was young, we did a collection before. We told everybody in May when you went on holiday. And then I had, had huge bins all over campus collecting those toiletries for MHA, Mental Health Association of Orange County. And it was great and got some big guys to help me load it up into bags, et cetera. The problem was, I got to tell you, at that time, our association didn't have a sink in the center. And a couple of people left their soap open, not tight, and it went all over, all of the bottles in that bag. So we're to the wise. If you do go, and again, what I said before, tell friends, just save your toiletries. If you know somebody who travels a lot, just save your toiletries and maybe you could go collect them and then bring them. And maybe ASG will have bins where we can drop them off. They really come in handy. They really are used. Thank you.
Okay.
We can't motion. It's not letting us motion.
We need a motion and a second on 6.1.
It's not letting us motion.
Oh. Did you?
It's not, it's not up there.
Oh yeah, there's no motion or second button.
There's no request to, well, I moved.
We don't have it up here. Yeah, so it sounds like trustee Milchaker would like to move it.
Yeah, yes.
Shouldn't it say motion to? Do you have a second?
Motion to approve.
Well, I move, I move to approve these, this priorities, our state and federal legislative priorities.
And do I have a second? I have a second from trustee Jay. Does it always say motion to approved?
It should be, it should say approved.
Does it always have a D?
I just noticed it now.
Has it always been that way? And we're just not noticing it. Well, are we observant? Hey, at least we can vote. And a recuse instead of abstain, that's an interesting one.
There's a recuse now, wow.
A new system, it's an update.
Thing to do.
How exciting. Still need everyone to vote though.
You're jinxing.
Oh, there we go, all right. We have a unanimous yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, so thank you very much. But you don't get to go anywhere because you now have 4.2 speaker fees study.
Exactly, okay, let me see.
Not all updates are progress, apparently.
Uh oh.
Fix the tents.
Here it is.
Sorry, Samir. Okay, so this presentation, I was requested by the chancellor to do some research, my team and I, about speaker fees and mainly researching news articles, blogs, any publications that address this issue. I, I do want to say that it was very insightful to do this research. And, and also confirm that you're not alone in having concerns about speaker fees. Bodies that have to approve fees, it runs the gambit. And they usually come with some controversy about amount and who the speaker is and what type of presentation they're doing. So you're not alone in having concerns, but there does seem to be some, some uniformity in what speakers are paid based on their celebrity, their notoriety, the prevalence of presentations that they make, how far they travel for, for presentations. So we, we did find some themes within the, the menu of, of fees for speakers. And that's what I, I plan to present to you this evening. So just a list of some of the publications that we reviewed, including the Harvard Business Review, Inside Higher Ed, the New York Times. NASA even has a speakers bureau with, with guidelines on what speakers should, should charge. So there, there's, there's several organizations that have this information. And then there were also a lot of articles that we, we combed through. Also Forbes.com and, you know, there, there were just various types of articles that, that we looked through. There's also an attachment, I hope that most of you were able to see it, that outlines and, and has a synopsis of each article that we, we looked through as well. So some of the themes that we found, top professionals, people that would be considered top professionals in their field, typically charge five to 10,000 for keynote speeches or presentations. Presentations also meant workshops that could be more than, than just one single presentation. So maybe a, a presentation to, to several groups. Sounds like a lot, but this seemed to be the, the common theme for people that were well known in their field, were constantly sought out to, to do keynote speeches or presentations. It usually was around that five to 10,000 range. We also found themes that for nonprofits, these same type of individuals for nonprofits or educational institutions, that amount usually lessen between three to 5,000. And that would be considered a deal for organizations that weren't looking to make any profit from having a speaker of that caliber to speak at their, their institution or to their group. And then it just kind of increases from there, anywhere from a celebrity speaker, you know, we didn't think included necessarily authors, but th- these people are considered celebrity speakers, anybody who's published a book or might come from an Ivy League institution like Harvard, could charge anywhere from 25 to 50,000 for presentations. And then usually to larger groups. So if we're talking above 500 people, that, that they could charge this amount. And then A-list celebrities are the people we, are, are, you know, are household names, athletes, performers that most of us would, would know very commonly. And for one to three day appearances, they could charge upward to $100,000. So like I said, sounds like a lot, but this seems to be the common theme of, of all the research that we conducted. As I mentioned earlier, a lot of the articles actually speak to being concerned about controversy related to speaker fees and why articles or certain press entities would look into speaker fees. So like I said, it's not uncommon to be concerned about this because the press sometimes gets a hold of what certain speakers are paid and kind of want to dig into why they were paid a certain amount. What we found is usually if it could be proven or there was some demonstration of the value, then, then that also made sense. But what we found was really presented in the controversy was the pay for travel or extravagant accommodations. It wasn't always related to the actual fee. But if they were getting all kinds of extras on top of their, their actual speech, if it wasn't, if it was in addition to the, the speech, then that's when the controversy kind of started and the press dug more into some of those costs, again, for travel accommodations. And this is when they're staying at resorts rather than, you know, the holiday end when they're, when they're coming to speak. So paying attention to, to things like that is important. We also found that a lot of organizations find it to be valuable when speakers are booked within the organization. For example, if our faculty have a good relationship with a top professional speaker, that often equates to saving money because there's a direct relationship. Many of the speakers bureaus charge in excess of 25% in addition to what a speaker would, would charge if he was, he or she was booked directly from a contact of theirs. So they add money on. If, if we had to search for speakers through bureaus, it would be much more expensive. But the fact that possibly some of our faculty have good relationships with these top level speakers actually brings the prices down a bit. And if we can find a way to either collaborate within the district so that speakers can speak to more than one group or we can partner with colleges or different institutions across the county so that the speaker can not only speak here, but, but other places, we can save money in that way as well. So the key takeaways that we found from this research are that most conferences, and usually these are several day conferences, pay for keynote speakers anywhere between 10 to 20,000 to secure a celebrity type speaker. Again, this could be an author or someone from a prestigious university. We could expect to pay nearly 50,000. And again, booking a speaker more than once can lower the cost and par- partner with other organizations can also be helpful. But again, this is all anecdotal research. We did do our best to comb through as many articles that address speaker fees. And I think the, the main takeaway is that speakers can be expensive. The, the price tag does feel like a shock sometimes. But the going rate for a lot of these speakers are, are within the thousands. And so this just helped kind of confirm what we've been seeing in, in terms of cost for speakers. Happy to answer any questions I can ask, answer.
Trustee Whitright out.
As you said, it is difficult to go through all these and I did read this well.
Okay.
My concern is that most of all, most of the presentations were at conferences. And I guess my concern is to pay $10,000 or $5,000 for someone in a classroom. And if we could have, you said other schools participate with us, that's good. Maybe make an agreement with a school that one time the students come here, one time the students go there. But I really think you have to look at the numbers. I'm, I'm saying I'd love to have our students be introduced to all these great speakers, but we have to look at numbers.
Sure, I think that's fair. And in the research, we did find that audience count did, did, it was a factor in how much they charged. So usually it would be more expensive the bigger the crowd. We saw that the keynote speeches for graduations were much higher than.
I saw that near write up.
So yeah, you're, you're absolutely right.
Trustee Milk sugar.
Yeah, both, both presentations were very interesting, thanks for giving them.
Sure.
I just recall when I was, I was vice president of programs for the Orange County School Boards Association, I think for two years. And we were, I was able to get Erin Gruehl to come speak to, to us. She spoke to the, to the school board members and the administrators at that meeting. And she agreed to speak to us for a much lower cost because we were, she was reaching all the school board members and administrators in Orange County. So that was a big selling point to her and it was a very, very successful evening. And I introduced her and gave a 20 minute introduction, so it was, it was fun. But, but it was a very good presentation. I, I actually think you, you do have to weigh the advantage that we get, that our students get, that our, our staff gets from a speaker versus the cost. That has to be weighed carefully and, and ensuring that we're, we're within normal parameters, which you, which you gave us, which are helpful. And ensuring that the presentation is, is worth the cost to our faculty, staff, students. And it will be helpful, maybe change their lives if it's a good enough speaker. So, but we have to be mindful of the cost too, so thank you.
Sure.
Trustee Jamal. So thank you for, for putting this together. This is an area I have actually been involved in for many years now, 30, 32 years. I started working for National Association in Washington DC in the 90s. And I used to help them put on a national convention. And I'll never forget when we, it was a construction materials, construction equipment trade show. And we had retained a former Buffalo Bills quarterback, Congressman and HUD Secretary Jack Kemp as our keynote speaker for 50 grand. And so the, the brain trusted the association saying, well, you're young and you're social. You, you go pick him up at the airport. So they, it was in Las Vegas, the convention center. So they sent me to the, to the airport and picked up Jack, Secretary Kemp with his wife. He assisted flying first class. And, and then he got in the, in limousine and he looked at me and said, what do you want me to say? And, and I'm thinking, and he's a great, I mean, I don't, he's passed away and, and I think Jack Kemp was a tremendous person. But I was thinking, we just paid you $50,000. And I gave him, you know, in the 10 minute ride from the Vegas airport to the convention center, four or five talking points and he did it. So I, and, and that, I, I think that illustrates that. But we were an organization that had 25,000 attendees at a trade show. Even though we were a nonprofit organization, we had a multimillion dollar budget. CES would just put on the trade show in, in Las Vegas last week, two weeks ago. That's a hundred million dollar operation, even though it's a nonprofit. So they have the ability to bring in those types of speakers and in turn generate income. So I don't, I, I, it's, I understand the point you guys are trying to make with this presentation. But, you know, I think there, there are ways in which to secure speakers that can be really creative. I'm putting on a conference in two weeks in Washington DC. And we have, I have panelists from all over the country flying in and we're not paying a single speaker fee. We're paying a couple, some travel costs, but we're not paying any speaker fees. So I think there are creative ways to do this. And, and sometimes you can't get around paying honorarium or honoraria or stipends, but there's ways that you can as well. So, you know, I, I think it's, I mean, I appreciate the, the, the research you did. I didn't know, necessarily believe you had to do all of that. But I, I mean, I think it's a good education for the board, so thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, yes, I agree. Good information, kind of eye opening to some degree. Perhaps you could speak, I don't know if it'd be you or, or someone else, the, kind of the process we go through negotiating the fees is to like, how much? How much do we, like, to use my wife's way of shopping, how much do we save through negotiation?
I don't have any personal experience booking speakers. I, I do know that I hear during our, some of our meetings, I know you do. Well, and not for this district, yeah. But I, I have heard that some of those personal relationships really do weigh as an important factor of saving funds and that at times the, the speaker selection is shared amongst the colleges so that i- if, if available and, and the opportunity presents itself that the speaker can, you know, speak at more than one location. If even not, if not at the same time, there's some negotiation and promises that the speaker can come back. And sometimes that does weigh in a reduced fee for the speaker. But that's anecdotal, I don't know if anyone else can speak to that.
Anyone?
Our process has been admittedly a bit ad hoc, but that's sometimes worked to our advantage. In the largest speaker fee that I'm aware of, the recent approval of Tara Westover's fee to appear later this academic year. It was a faculty led committee that actually reached out to her agent themselves. And I, I think having faculty be the spokespeople for the college actually helped us. I, I think in the end, we paid about half of their asking price. So having people who are on the ground turned out to be an advantage there. So I don't know that we have a uniform process. It might be something we're thinking about if we're going to have a lot of high cost speakers. But up until now, we haven't had a lot of high cost speakers.
Okay, and then perhaps we can get someone to speak to the idea of the funding for it. Where like sometimes it comes out of the general budget, sometimes it's grant money, things like that.
So, so typically when we're looking at bringing in a high cost speaker, we would be looking for categorical funds or grant money to do that with. It would be fairly unusual to pay a large speaker fee out of a general fund. And that would only be if there were no other funds available to pay for it. So typically, for instance, on equity speakers, which often carry a high rate because there aren't a lot of people doing this work in the country, those are typically paid from equity designated funds, so called SEP funds.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, from here, we'll move on to the consent calendar items. I'm going to go ahead and pull 5.2 and 5.3. Do I have any other polls?
I have a quick question on 5.6.
All right, so we're pulling 5.6. And I'm going to pull 5.7 as well, because I know there were some questions on that one. Any others?
I, I guess 5.13.
5.13? Seeing, hearing no others, I will entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
Can't do it.
You still can't do it.
And it still says approved.
I have a motion from trustee Wright. A second from trustee Whitright out. Anybody, okay, so that's on the balance of the consent calendar items. That is a unanimous yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. So 5.2 I pulled so that trustee Wright can read the summaries of the board resolutions. We have two of them, right? So we'll do them one at a time to then vote on them.
For the first resolution. Go ahead.
Yeah.
First resolution, support of California Community Colleges' climate change and sustainability goals. This resolution is in support of the climate change and sustainability goals from the California Community Colleges to be achieved by 2025 and 2030. to be achieved by two thousand twenty-five and two thousand thirty. This resolution also supports collaboration between the California Community Colleges and SOC C C D students, faculty, staff, and community members to advance local climate change and sustainability through activities across the district while implementing environmental sustainability practices to promote healthy and safe learning environments for our students.
Okay. We do a voice roll on this one? Oh, you wanna read them both and then? On them one at a time. Okay. So we're reading out the second one.
The second one. Resolution, support of Orange County School Board Associations encouragement of the county of Orange encouragement of the county of Orange Board of Supervisors to release mental health funding to educational institutions. This resolution supports the position of the Orange County School Board Association to request financial funding for educational mental health resources from the Orange County Board of Supervisors. This resolution further encourages efforts to obtain directed funding through the Board of Supervisors and OC Department of Education to supplement the mental health programs being offered in schools throughout the country.
Okay, so now, at this point, we'll do uh, one at a time. I have a motion to approve the climate change sustainability resolution.
So move.
Second.
Trustee Milchker and a second from trustee Jamal. Oh, wait, hold on. Yeah, we need to go back.
Really?
Well, no, you don't. He, he had a question. So before we can vote, we have to entertain questions. There we go. Trustee Jamal.
Okay, so my que- I fully support, fully supportive of this resolution. But my question is regarding uh, our district's ability to meet the goals that are outlined in this resolution. Maybe our Vice Chancellor of Business Services can address that.
Yes, we are working towards meeting these goals. We have just recently finalized our sustainability plan, which also includes an integrated energy master plan um, that we're going to be working through and presenting uh, to kick and kind of moving that forward. We plan on doing a presentation to the board in March about that plan. And most of the goals that are in here, I think will be easily achievable. The one that I'm concerned about on how we're even going to track it is uh, the number six on the procurement of sustainable products and services and um, by, you know, reducing that by twenty percent to our current levels. And, you know, if we look at, I guess it depends on how we determine what procurement means. If we look at, are we procuring carpet that's sustainable? Then yes, we are, because that's part of our, our standards that we have. But if we're really looking at items that are consumable, such as our paper products, our pens, you know, everything that we use on a daily basis, we don't really have a way to track which items are sustainable and which ones aren't. So I guess that's going to be the question that we're gonna be working through on how we define that and how are we going to be able um, to meet that one. But as far as, you know, for the buildings and our buildings being um, zero net energy or we already meet lead equivalent on all of the renovations that we do. So that one's pretty easy. It will be easy to implement purchasing, you know, electric vehicles with our transportation fleet. So some of these, I think, are really easy. And really, the main challenge, I think, is the procurement of our goods and services.
Thank you.
Okay. So it, it might understand that as soon as you put in a motion, a second, it flips to the vote screen? Awesome. All right, so we're ready to vote on this one, I think. We have a unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. So then now, the second resolution on the uh, mental health funding.
I'll motion, make a motion to.
Second.
Uh, approve this resolution.
Motion from trustee Milchker, second from trustee Wright. No requests to speak.
One, one more question.
Sorry.
Don't, don't we have to um, do resolutions by roll call? You don't have to? Okay, okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Trustee Jamal.
So I am supportive of this resolution, but I had a question about um, our own strategy regarding this. So my question, I have a couple of questions. Are we, do we plan to reach out to the Board of Supervisors? You know, on, on this issue. And then second, if, what, what would be our priorities if we were to reach out to them? So for example, if we are to secure funding, what would we use it for?
So that's a good question. Uh, the Orange County School Board Association asked specifically that we let them know if this resolution passes tonight. So they seem to have um, a process of building a coalition. I think there is some, there are some plans for how to commu- how to communicate to the Board of Supervisors within the coalition that they're attempting to build with past resolutions from, from each district. So I know that's kind of our strategy, number one, to let them know that this passed, ask them about coordinating communication. We definitely can do some communication on our own, specifically to the supervisors who represent this area.
Right.
That we have great relationships with. Um, so I think the next step would be to let them know that this resolution has been passed and that we are partnering with other groups like the Orange County School Board Association. Um, and then maybe also list some of the other school districts. I know Irvine uh, School Board passed a similar resolution um, last year in December. So.
No, I think, I, sorry to interrupt. I, I mean, I think being a team player is great. I think it's awesome. We're, we're, we're part of this coalition. But I also think, you know, in the resolution, we're, you know, we're calling on the Board of Supervisors to do certain things. We should advocate for our district. And as you mentioned, we have, you know, two supervisors, uh, maybe three, that actually touch our.
Yeah.
Uh, service area. And um, we should, I mean, we should put together a pro- plan for what we want um, out of this funding, should we get it.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. And I, I think I would be talking to our staff who work with our students who would need uh, some of these mental health services to figure out what specific solutions we're, we plan to, to request within this funding. And, and even how much, you know, we're just kind of asking for blanket funding to be, be directed, but we might need to be, be more specific.
And I, I think it's, so we have our board meeting tomorrow for Orange County School Board Association. I'm going to that. And the, they have a s- a mapped out strategy. And I actually, this is one of the situations, I kinda spoke on behalf of the board that I wasn't clear as to what you guys would be comfortable with. Either passing a resolution to try and get some of the money or to pass a resolution of support of the other districts going for the money that may have more of a financial need. What we can do now, once we pass this, is have a decision on which direction we wanna go as a board. It gives us that option. It's, it's a little more open ended on our regard. Most of the other districts passed resolutions demanding the money. This one doesn't do that. This is more, we support the idea of them getting the money, but if we need the money too, we have that openness to do that. It's kind of the strategy that I decided would be better for this board. If that makes sense.
I, I think if we have, uh, I mean, if we have a need and, and, and we want, there's no reason why we shouldn't advocate for that to the.
I, I don't disagree, but I didn't wanna speak on behalf of the board in making that decision. So I left it a little more open. And then, and then again, they've got a strategy developed. And I will share with you guys as it get, what the next steps are.
Once we have specific numbers, we can always present another resolution with outlined solutions or goals and then have a dollar figure tied to that, if you think that would be helpful.
I can. Uh, I don't, I don't think we need a resolution for that. I think that's done in one-on-one meetings and outreach where we can. Present uh, you know, talking points, white papers, fact sheets, that kinda stuff. Perfect.
Yeah, I agree.
And.
Trustee Whitwright L, did you still have a question?
Oh.
You were reaching.
Yeah, I, I, I did. Um, I wanted to know, what did you mean when you said that if someone else had a greater need? Who's else?
The other districts. The, the K through twelve districts are, they have a, a different funding model. They have different restrictions. And they're the ones that put this together. The, they were the ones that really are the driving force behind this, you know, trying to get this money. And so they asked the community colleges to be behind it. And again, being a basic aid district, I didn't know how comfortable we were trying to go after and demanding a need when we may not have it as, as much of a, a, a financial burden or need than a non-basic aid K through twelve district.
I guess I'm caught between a rock and a hard spot on this one, because if we have mental health needs, and I know they have been identified, can we share the money?
But my point is, is we may, we certainly have mental health needs, but we may already have the money to do it without having to go after money that the other districts could use more than we could.
If that's the case, then I agree. If that's the case, I agree with you.
But, but I, but I'm not saying that, that I, that the whole point of this is we can make that decision.
Okay.
Without it being dictated to us.
Okay, that's even better.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
So if we decide that there's a need and we don't have the money to fill that need, and there's money available, then we can go after it just as much as saddleback unified.
Got it.
Right? So it gives us that option.
Also, this is the first step to ask the Board of Supervisors to consider allocating this funding towards education. Right now, it's not available to educational institutions. So this is kind of the first step to say, you have this mental health funding, there are needs in the schools, why not consider schools to, to divvy out this funding? Because right now, currently, it's, it's not being utilized. And so this is some advocacy towards you.
Sorry to interject, but I mean, we've, I don't, I think you were there. I mean, we brought Supervisor Bartlett here for a tour of the health facility. She's well aware of that we have significant, and her staff as well are well aware we have mental health needs.
Right.
I think the other supervisors are also aware, needs are not just, I mean, K through twelve, but also higher ed.
Sure.
I think they know that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree. I'm just saying that I didn't want, again, I didn't wanna speak on behalf of the board that we were willing to go to that step to demand money from the Board of Supervisors.
Sounds like, so it sounds like we can kind of tailor our, our ask after this.
And I, I was, again, certainly find out more about strategy moving forward tomorrow night.
Perfect.
Okay, so, no more requests to speak. We'll go ahead and vote on the second resolution. Have a unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Now, five point three. Uh, let's see, this is a poll because Vice Chancellor Bermuda has an announcement to make on the item.
The speaker item for tonight's board meeting has been pulled the date listed as January thirty-first, twenty twenty, re- legal immigration training. This item will be going forward on a future board agenda with additional dates.
Okay.
Which, which was pulled, I'm sorry.
Five point three.
But there's, there's a lot, there's a, there's a lot of things. Which one?
The first item.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I already put it on my calendar. I did. I actually did.
Okay. Now you can take it off. You're free now.
I'm taking it off right now.
All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to pass five point three as amended.
So move.
I have a motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee Jay. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Moving on now to five point six, trustee Whitwright L.
Yes, I have a simple question. Um, on the grid, uh, where it talks about names of groups or the clubs. The, the tour that they wanna do to the historical black colleges and universities, tour of Maryland, Virginia, and Washington DC. Who's the club? Who's the group?
I, I have the same question. Because it, because it, it just says, it sounds like it's a wonderful tour to all the historical b- black colleges. But it doesn't say which group is being invited to go on this trip. Or it doesn't mention a faculty advisor. It doesn't, it doesn't say anything.
Um, I, I can address that. The faculty advisor is Tiffany Tram.
Okay.
And we were invited to participate. Um, over the past few years, there've been at least twenty-three California community colleges that have been invited to participate. So um, any student um, had the opportunity to sign up. They took student applications, selected five students and an alternate. And I believe the trustees already have the list of colleges.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah. So it's not a particular club. It was an invitation to participate. And this is the first time we've selected to participate.
Thank you. Were the, were the, was the invitation given to all the students at IVC? Or was it a certain class? Or, or was it student government?
Um, the invitations went out through student government, but I don't know if it went to every single student on campus.
Okay, so, so there was a maximum of five students that were able to participate and with one alternate?
Yes.
Well, it sounds like a wonderful um, program.
So, and so this is through a group that does these uh, every spring. And it will, they'll be with other community college students. So it's not just these five who are going.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Who's the who? Who invited us?
I'm trying to remember. It's ETS Educational Tour Service, if that's the correct acronym. It's with um, the, Educational Student Tours, EST. So it's with um, an individual named Dr. Yasmin Delahoussaye, who worked in the, I worked with her for fifteen years in the LA Community College District. And this was part of, of their equity work to take students back east to these HBCUs. And it, it's also part of something that was done through the State Chancellor's Office where we made more, uh, uh, matriculation agreements or articulation agreements with those HBCUs so that they would take our students. So this has been going, going on for a number of years.
And we have that in place already?
Yes, that was done system wide. They didn't do that college by college.
And it's with community colleges. This is all in community college invitation.
Only community colleges.
Okay.
Yes. But Yasmin spent twenty-eight years uh, working with, in student services. She'd known throughout the state. Retired now, but.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing no further requests to speak. I'll entertain a motion. And a second.
I'd move to pass item five point six, student out of state travel.
To trustee Milchker, motion. And a second from trustee Jay. Seeing no further requests to speak. We'll vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Uh, next, I pull five point seven just to make sure that everyone understood. We got some information on this on the board conference call. It's a, a resolution to adopt a fee that we really don't have any choice but to adopt because it's a state law. But it, it is important to note that uh, there's gonna be some logistic aspects to this that Dr. Bermuda may or may not wish to expand on.
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
So uh, this is about the student representation fee and how we're gonna roll that out and kind of the timeline and kind of the the handcuff that was thrown on you by the state and so forth.
Right, we received notice of this fairly late, but we've changed our development schedule as much as we can, uh, elevating this from uh, being completed next fall to being completed this summer.
And, and that's an attempt to capture.
And and that's an attempt to capture the students that have already been enrolled in the spring, kind of like. Oh, by the way, you owe two dollars.
Yes.
I have a quote from a movie in my head, I want my two dollars, all right.
What, what, sorry, my notes have gone away from my granite, cause I don't know why. Um, what's the delay? Why, what, why is, what's, what's the challenge?
We have, we have a development calendar for SIS, we have over a hundred items that have been prioritized by the colleges for addition to this that we can take last minute. Uh, things, but they didn't tell us about the this until the last quarter of the last year. We simply cannot accommodate, uh, a project of that size so quickly. We moved around and we've advanced the development calendar as much as we can, about four months, but that's as much as we can advance.
So does this involve, uh, outside consultants as well?
Yes, it does, it, uh, we developed this from scratch and we have to make sure we test it through quality assurance testing to make sure it doesn't affect other aspects of the system.
So, so is this two dollar fee for all students?
As far as being known, yes, it's for all students, they have the ability to opt out.
Okay, they have the ability to opt out. Do, do the students know they can opt out of it, paying the fee, uh, will they be told?
Oh, yes, they will be informed.
Okay, okay, thanks, thank you.
All right. We're realizing that the granite has re-updated the agenda and we lost all our notes.
Deleted all of our notes, like everything.
Our electronic notes. Oh, well.
All right.
Progress is good, progress is good, progress is good.
Progress comes with.
I will, uh, entertain a motion then, yeah, 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 I knew that was, I knew.
Someone was gonna say that.
I knew that was put up on a tee for somebody.
What did he say?
He said paper is good.
Oh, they just came back, the notes just repopulated.
Okay, speaking, it shall be done, all right. So I entertain a motion to, uh, approve five point seven. Trustee Lang, second from.
Second.
Trustee Wright. Seeing no further questions or requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Uh, next one is five point one three, Trustee Jamal.
Yes, so I was, I'm supportive of this, but I had a, I saw, I had a question, I saw that there was, uh, some diversity training. Uh, diversity, equity, inclusion training taking place at IVC by USC, and it looks great, so I just wanted to know a little bit more about that.
Uh, the training is a ten-week, um, program. And we are having twenty, um, participants, including, uh, faculty, staff, and administrators. Who will be going through the program. And I believe several of the board members were at the IVC President's Open Forum and met, uh, Sumi. So Sumi will be the lead, uh, facilitator for the program. And the intent is to train the trainers. So over time, the expectation is that the administration, the faculty leadership, and the classified staff leadership. Will be in a better position to have conversations surrounding issues involving equity, diversity.
Sounds great.
Very good. Okay, I have a motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Jay. Seeing no further questions or requests to speak, go ahead and vote on the item. Have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Moving on then to. The six point oh action items, we've already done six point one, so we'll go to six point two, CCTT Board of Directors nominations. So, quick question, I believe this would be for Letitia. If I were to try and go for a third attempt on this, would we have materials ready for this weekend? Yeah, it went from happy, that was a, that was a high to a low moment right there.
Nervous.
We should, I I was actually just looking at your brochures the other day, I would just have to confirm that we don't have a date in there, which I think we were pretty careful about that. But I literally have printed brochures. That would be ready to go, mm-hmm. I would just have to confirm that there's not a date on there of when to vote, but. Provided that there's not, and that I planned ahead for this very moment, that, um, we'd be ready to go.
Okay.
Yep.
Cause that would be a concern, if if I were to try it again, I don't want to go all the way up there and then not have anything.
Yeah, and that's the best opportunity.
I had the first time and that, that, that was a flop.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, duly noted.
Yeah, I'll nominate, um, TJ, President Pendegrass, Trustee President Pendegrass, because I think the third time's the charm.
Okay. I accept that.
Okay.
Three open seats and. How many incumbents, or that's, open, three open seats. I see.
In, in.
Yeah.
I can't see run.
There's three open seats.
Right.
It's not that many.
And then we all should hand out brochures and send emails to the trustees we know.
Right, okay.
Hopefully it will help.
All right, I guess we'll go ahead and vote on that nomination. Okay, so we have six yay votes, one abstain and a student advisory yes vote, because it says yay and not yes anymore.
I've I've noticed that.
You always vote, you should always vote for yourself.
If you're allowed, all right, uh. So then moving on to six point three, budget calendar. Entertain a motion in a second, you have a motion from Trustee Jamal, second from Trustee Wright. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. We have a unanimous yay vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have. Six point four, Saddleback College Advanced Technology and Applied Science Building Project. DSA inspection.
So moved.
Motion from Trustee Jamal, second from Trustee Jay. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. You have a unanimous trustee yay vote and a student advisory yes vote. Six point five, master service agreement for electronic and hard copy transcript services. Motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Wright. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yay vote and a student advisory yes vote. Six point six, board policy revisions for review and study. A motion from Trustee Jay. Second from Trustee Whit Riddell. And a request to speak from Trustee Jamal.
Okay, so, uh. We have, uh, a board policy subcommittee, um, and we've, we've met, uh, a couple of months ago and. I think it's good new process that we've established. Um, to have three of us take a look at the board policies and then get input from B Park and then we come here and it's worked pretty well. Um, I want to call attention to the last item, BP six one four zero, college speakers. And, um, so this issue was discussed with the board policy subcommittee. And our, uh, I know Trustee Milchker, I mean, Trustee Witt and Jay, you were there. Um, I think we felt like, um, cause the the recommendation, I think, is to delete this language, which I understand in effect. Um, would, and it carries over to Letitia's presentation earlier, would now prescribe. Delineating in agendas, the honorariums that are provided to speakers. Um, and so I think the board policy subcommittee felt like, as trustees. Um, being transparent about taxpayer dollars is really important to us. Um, I understand that we, uh, approve budgets, but it's not just approving a budget for the college, it's also. Sometimes how the the dollars are spent and I, you know, from my perspective, um. Nothing more important to me than academic freedom, I mean, academic freedom, the First Amendment, I mean, that's, that's the heart and soul of. Who I am and and one of the reasons why, um, I feel so privileged to be on a board like this because I think I try to protect those freedoms. So I think that, um, I think eliminating, I think there's some questions about. How this data will be presented in terms of college speakers and whether the board is going to be provided information. As to how taxpayer dollars are being used. Um, and that, um, since I've been on the board, I don't think there's been a single instance when we have not. Supported or approved, uh, a speaker. At one of the colleges, I've been on the board eight years, so there hasn't been a single instance. Um, I think there's, from what I understand, there's some questions that somehow this is a deterrent for the board to see the honorariums printed. Um, I I just know academic freedom is so important, um. And equally important, I think, is fiduciary responsibility of the trustees, so I I guess I want to understand. What we gain as a district by eliminating. Prescribing or prohibiting or not allowing the board of trustees to see taxpayer dollars being spent on speakers.
I think the intention, you know, to have this as an approval item, it's my understanding that if we were to eliminate this board policy. We would move those items into the information section on speakers who are coming. So it would still be information to the board, but there wouldn't be, uh, an approval item on the speakers. So I know this was a recommendation out of the B Park Committee. Uh, I think, as I understand it, and I certainly let people who are on that committee speak to it, since I am not. Uh, that, that the feeling is that is that you hire. College presidents and vice presidents and so forth, or you know, you're more involved with the college presidents. Who make those kinds of fiscal decisions in concert with their college community. And that you should appreciate their role and hold them accountable should the colleges not balance their budgets. But not necessarily look to the level of the particular speakers that they are selecting. Uh, at at least that's my understanding of their feelings, so. If anyone, I don't know if Anne Marie, you want to, Anne Marie Chairs B Park?
What does B Park stand for?
Uh, Board Policy and Administrative Regulation Committee.
Oh, okay, thank you.
President Pendegrass, may I speak?
Anne Marie? Yeah, okay.
She deferred to me.
She deferred to you, okay.
I I would agree, agree with Chancellor Burke and her assessment overall of one of the issues related to it, that the Saddleback College Academic Center has been working for years. To remove this policy, um, for a variety of reasons, we would not. And we do not and would not question the prerogative of the board to ratify purchase orders and contracts. We obje- object to the specific items, these specific items being called out separately. The board does not question or specifically call out thousand dollars being spent on a printer, but they would for a thousand dollar speaker's fee. This should be a college budget decision. In addition, it slows the process down by having to have this recommend, uh, these requests in weeks and weeks in advance to get to the board of trustees. And it limits our flexibility as faculty to bring in relevant speakers in a timely manner for subjects that may be coming up very suddenly. Obviously, not having speaker approval by the board is not a carte blanche to hire Michelle Obama for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to come by. I I looked up her fees, so I knew how much she would be. Um, the college has budgets to work with and we have allocations for our divisions and departments, we already work within those budgets. And other constraints to make our day-to-day decisions for other resource requests. From my perspective, this is a resource request and it should be treated as such. Um, we do put into consideration the cost and who's being impacted by that speaker, how many students we would reach, just as we would with any other equipment. And it's difficult to compare apples to oranges when it comes to speakers fees. I could get the Director of the Association of American Geographers on campus tomorrow for a hot lunch. But that's because of my connections with him and it wouldn't be that difficult for me, but I couldn't do that for other groups. Um, but me, if I was looking for a specific climatologist, Glenn McDonald at UCLA, it would probably cost us ten thousand dollars. Cause he's the leading researcher in climate research in Southern California. But if I needed somebody on climate research, he's the person I want. So as the presentation record showed earlier, there is a huge variation in speaker fees. But it's also, if I don't have ten thousand dollars to spend on Glenn McDonald. I'm, I'm not gonna sacrifice other areas of my budget as a department chair or working within my division to spend that money. But again, I want to go back to this should be a college decision and how the college spends their money, just as it would be for any other resource request, thank you.
Okay. You have more?
I might later, let, I'll let other trustees.
Yeah.
Trustee Milchker.
I I I was going to ask, um, also why this, um, board policy on speakers was going to be eliminated, um, and. So now I'm understanding that the reason the board policy on college speakers is being eliminated is because. The board will no longer vote on the college speakers at the college, is is that what I'm hearing? Um, I, there, there's.
Yes, and I just.
I mean, I've never, I've been, I've been on the board for like a gazillion years and I've never voted against a college speech or speaker ever. If you could find that I voted against a college speaker, you won't find it, don't worry, but I've always voted for every speaker. And I also like the idea of seeing the speakers so I could put them on my calendar, cause I might want to come hear the speaker.
You would still see the speaker, you would still see the speakers, it would just be in the information item.
It would be in the sevens instead of the fives.
They'll be listed in the sevens instead of the fives? So that, because I, I mean, I, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud because I just didn't didn't understand why the, um, why this board policy was being eliminated. And I'm certainly never going to tell the college they can't have one speaker or another speaker. Because I disagree with their thought or because I don't, you know, and I'm I'm sure that the college professors are not gonna invite somebody that I would. Disapprove of having to the college, to the colleges, um.
But even if you did, they could.
Yeah, cause otherwise it's content.
Discrimination.
Yeah, 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 well, I wouldn't anyway.
You wouldn't engage in content discrimination.
Yeah, yeah, cause I've read, I've read Chimorinsky's book on on college, uh, free speech in colleges, um.
So, so you would still have access to the information, it would just, as it appears tonight in seven point two. It would be there rather than in the consent calendar.
So, so it would be, but would the, would the cost of the speaker still be in the information?
No.
No, that's what.
Well, are they trying to keep the board from, I mean, are we, is the board not entitled to have all the information like everyone else gets? I mean, we try to be transparent here, we want the faculty to have, I mean, I've always believed in transparency to everyone.
As Professor Walsh, Walsh suggested, you don't see all of the expenditures now because we don't list everything. We list how many expenditures are under five thousand, but we don't itemize them for you in the agenda. Because you've give, you've delegated authority to us to make those professional decisions.
Yeah, under five thousand dollars or something, of course, we don't, we don't, uh.
Yeah, but some of these are gonna be over five.
And then they would appear in the, in the item, like in item five point one three.
But but what I'm saying is, and I'm, and I'm just thinking out loud, which is always dangerous, but but. You know, if, if we believe so strongly in being transparent to our taxpayers, being transparent to our faculty, being transparent to our. Classified, being transparent to our students, why are we taking the transparency away from the board? We're not able to see the cost of these things, I I just, I'm just thinking about it, okay, thank you.
I. I have an agreement on that, I think, I think what I have observed and what I am gleaning from, from the conversation is. We have had.
is we have had meetings in the past where people have questioned the cost of a speaker and have said, wow, that seems really expensive. And that is causing some groups to pause and potentially lose the opportunity to get a speaker because they're afraid to have it highlighted under a spotlight at a board meeting in public. And not to say that that's wrong, but if, again, if they have the budget for it and have figured out a way to pay for that speaker, to then have it questioned unnecessarily, because it has been budgeted and it does have a, a payment method that makes it somehow seem negative. And I think it, it, part of it is, there has to be that relationship, that trust relationship, that we're not going to question those costs publicly to where they would then feel that pressure to, to balk on it, on the opportunity to get a speaker. Is the way I'm kind of interpreting that. And I don't disagree with that. That I'm not qualified to know whether a speaker is worth 5,000 or 50,000. That's not, I, I don't have that skill set. And I, I, maybe one person on the board does, but at the same time, if they have done their process to negotiate and that person costs $50,000 and they have the money to do it, that's up to them. And so I don't see a problem with having it be informational versus approval, but I think I still agree that we would like to see, I don't think, I, I want to see the value or the, the cost of the speaker to maybe indicate to me, hey, that's probably a really good speaker. That that person probably earned, like, is worth that. And I may make extra effort to go see a $50,000 speaker than a $5,000 speaker in my busy schedule. So I, I am a little leery of, of disengaging the, the information completely, but I think there has to be that understanding that we as board members need to maybe be careful about what we highlight and what we nitpick on when it's been already budgeted, that they have it within their budget. They're not asking us for more money to say, hey, we really want to get this speaker, but we don't have it in our budget, can we get some more? That's never been an issue, and you're right, we've never said no. But we've indicated that we might be willing to say no because they seem too expensive. And, and I think that's kind of what I'm gleaning from that. Trustee Lang.
Let me explain why. I don't think anybody here, other than trustee Milchekr, was on this board. When we had a major problem with a speaker that came on campus and caused a potentially very violent situation, and one in which trustee Milchekr and I had to appear, I think, before the county board of supervisors, was it? Uh, trustee Milchekr?
Which kind of human relations.
Unfortunately instigated in large part by a former trustee of this board. But the point that I'm trying to make is part of this says, of this policy includes, it's not just the money factor, it's the expression which is obscene, libelous, or slanderous according to current legal standards, which so incite audiences. And that's clearly what we had at that time, a clear and present danger of folks that had gathered on campus because we had two opposing factions related to an event that we had sponsored. Maybe had that gone to the board for prior oversight, that could have been eliminated. But I think that was one of the very reasons that we implemented this board policy. And I think it's still a very real reason why we need to have this board policy, and we need to have trustee oversight in this area. So I just want to explain why I'm very much opposed to elimination of this.
And I recall when I first came on the board, that we were, at that time, we were getting the speaker, like, information, like, a month or two after they'd already spoken. And, and I remember you objecting to it at that time, and they, we got it changed to where there would be more forthcoming before the speakers came. And again, it's informational for us so that we can then potentially attend. So again, I'm not, I'm not against the presentation of, of the information. And as long as removal of this policy, we still get that, which is what I'm understanding.
Just think you're, I think you're missing the point in focusing on the dollars here, and not on the fact of what this policy was originally designed to do, and that was to provide proper oversight by this board of speakers that would come on campus that potentially could be a clear and present danger, notwithstanding the freedom of speech considerations that are out there.
Right. And I, and I think potentially, and again, this is, it's good that we're having this, because this is for review and study, that we can possibly refer this back to B-Park to have it not completely eliminated, but reworded in a way that, that addresses that concern? I, I don't know, is that something that's possible?
Well, anything's possible. But I also want you to be aware that the laws have changed recently, and there was pushback from, from universities, particularly Berkeley, where there, there was quite a bit of damage that was done. And the result of the change in the law was the universities are responsible. And they have to pay the fees. And, and a clear and present danger is no longer an acceptable reason for preventing a speaker to come on campus. And that's been changed in the last three years. We can get that information for you in, in this period of time, but there has been, again, so much concern about that being used as an excuse for viewpoint discrimination, that there have been laws made. Now, I know UCLA has set aside $100,000 annually in their budget to handle the security costs around speakers. So there has been some more recent change, since, certainly since 2016.
Right, but there are boundaries between freedom of speech and safety and security of folks on campus. And I think that's still a responsibility that this board has that we would potentially be abrogating if we eliminated this policy. And I have a grave concern about that.
Well, we'll get you the updates in the laws too, so that you can consider it all.
Is that where it references a California Education Code? Is that part of that, or are you referencing a completely different state law?
I think this is the old, that referenced the old California Education Code.
Oh, I see.
So we'll get you the updated.
So I just want to say one more thing. You know, we looked at this issue in the Board Policy Subcommittee, and there was, we, three of us felt like the policy should, should stay. And I think what we should, I think trustee Milchekr said it really well. I mean, it really goes to the heart of being transparent as a board. And I think that, to the three on the end there, to Dan and Kurt and Cheryl. I mean, I, I, what I, I'm not going to support make this change, but I think what we can do is, is look at ways over the next few months to how, where this can address, maybe we can find some kind of an accommodation that makes sense. But I think, I don't think it makes sense at this time to eliminate this language. And, and I've never voted against a speaker, academic freedom is paramount. First Amendment is, First Amendment or die, as far as I'm concerned. So, but I don't think the, it was, I'm sorry it came to this. I think there was some miscommunication between the Board Policy Subcommittee and the chancellor. I, I, I had thought the language was going to be, remain. I didn't know that it was going to be presented as being deleted. So, because we had discussed this, and, and the three of us on the Board Policy Subcommittee did not want the language removed. So I think it's something we're going to have to, I recommend we look at over the next few months and try to figure out a way to address the, you know, the concerns you brought forward.
Yes.
I was just, I'm sorry. I can address why it came to you as a deletion. So we did take it to the Board Policy Subcommittee, and after that, I, we went back to B-Park and informed B-Park that the Subcommittee was not in favor of eliminating it. But I think, you know, as Dan expressed earlier, the B-Park Committee was really in agreement, that they felt that it should be eliminated. And so that's kind of why it came here as a deletion, even though I had relayed that the Subcommittee of the Board did not.
It was a complete surprise to me when I saw that.
So I think, you know, as you stated earlier, we take things to the Board Subcommittee, then it goes to B-Park, and then it comes back. And so it went to the Board Subcommittee, it went to B-Park, and then what you're seeing is the recommendation from B-Park and the members on B-Park. The main concern, and I don't think B-Park has an issue with bringing the speaker names and the dates and the times as an information item. The concern is getting the board's approval in advance on the amount of fee that's being paid, because that is hindering their ability to be flexible and to react quickly to speakers. And so the fact that we have to get board approval in advance, I think, is really the main objection of, of B-Park on that. So if we switched it to where it was just an information item, I guess the question, and I, and I've heard a couple of things, the question would be, is it an information item that still has to come to you before the event? Or would it be okay if some of it came after the event? I realize that the reason you want it before the event is so that you can attend. I get that. But I think what they're feeling on campus is that sometimes, in order for them to be as flexible and as nimble as possible, they may not be able to meet the deadlines to get it on the board agenda before the event.
So I guess I think what I'm hoping that we can figure out is a, is a happy medium. Like, there's, there's some solution to this. And that it doesn't need to be decided even by next month, even though this is up for review and study. I don't, I would hope that, I can't imagine it would be on the agenda next month for approval, if, if, if that makes sense.
Yes, so the convers, but the conversation had to start somewhere.
Right.
So we had to bring it to you to begin the conversation.
Trustee Lang.
Would it be appropriate to separate 6140 from the other items that we're voting on for review and study, which I understand, and vote on that separately?
I'm just, I'm wondering if we need to, if we're, if it is review and study, we're, we're reviewing and studying to the point that we want it.
Right, normally the items for review and study would come back for approval.
Right, but if you're communicating to me that you need additional time for review and study, you would just go ahead and start to pull together that information and not return it to the board agenda until there was some sense that you had received all of the information that you were seeking?
It would have to come back as another review and study.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Or a presentation.
I'm not sure that I can in good conscience vote for this motion with this item.
Why can't we pull this item?
Pull it off.
Pull it off the, put it off the, the list?
The list.
And vote on the balance.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with that.
Okay. So I would then need an entertainment, entertain a motion to amend 6.6 to remove BP 6140 from the list.
Move to remove it from the list to pull that particular item?
Well, you'd have to get, you have to get acceptance, I think, from the people that make or the motion.
Right. Which originally was trustee Jay. So do you consider that a friendly amendment? Seconder? Trustee Witt, right, L? Do you consider that a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, then we don't need to vote on it. So the motion is 6.6 with the elimination of BP 6140. See, no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
I've requested several times and it doesn't come up.
Oh, is it, oh, I have to scroll down. The list is too long. You're up.
I wanted to say, the board has never, okay, I've been, I'm the shortest one on this board. The board has never rejected a speaker, correct?
No.
No. I never, I don't remember any time we rejected a speaker. Yeah.
Not since I, I mean, my eight years, no, I can't go past that.
My third year, yes, no. I know that I have questioned several speakers, and I've only questioned them because when I was on faculty, I brought 11 speakers on campus, and I know what I had to go through, and it wasn't so hard. But I had community events, so maybe it wasn't as difficult to get them in before it was approved by the board, because it was a community event. I don't want faculty to have problems getting speakers and waiting for approval. I can testify as faculty member, I've had to have approval for other things by the board, and I thought, what a nuisance, sorry. And I really thought that. Come on, we all think that. And I just don't want to have a discourse between the board and the faculty, Dan, I, I don't. And what I've heard tonight, because I, now that you mentioned this event, I remember that. I mean, that was a, a big yahoo, let me tell you. So could that ever happen again? I doubt it, but it could. So let's find something in the, in the medium. I don't know, have to think about it. I would like to say that I want to satisfy the requests of, of faculty in a timely manner. So if we have to have an extra meeting or get emails to approve something, I'm not sure what the policy on that one is. The Roberts Rule there, here we go. But let's just pull it for this month and revisit it. But I really understand the need of the faculty, I do. But we've never disproved it, I mean, we've never disallowed a speaker.
Which actually kind of goes to the point, then, why do we vote on it? If we're never going to say no.
Hello? Well, because of what? Wait, whoa, whoa. Because of what?
You want to open up that Pandora's Box? I mean, I, I was, three years ago, I was taken down by a faculty member who said to me, why do you always vote seven to zero on every item? That's a joke. It wasn't one of you guys. And, and, and I, I got, I was admonished why this board continued to vote seven to zero on certain items. And he said to me, that's not right. And I said, well, what do you want me to do? I mean, if we agree with it, we agree with it. So, I mean, I was absolutely, we were slammed for having too many seven to zero votes. So be careful what you ask for in your comments.
Okay, just, anyway. All right. So we're voting on the balance of 6.6. Unanimous trustee ye vote and a student advisor yes vote. Next, we have 6.7.
Well, pardon me.
Oh, sorry?
Back to 6.6. I think we had switched that to eliminate the last sentence. Did we not?
Switched what?
Right, but it said that if you looked at six, the 6.6 language, it was still in there. Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think they have editing power on the, on the list up there. All right, 6.7, these are for approval, board policies.
So moved.
Got a motion for trustee Jamal, second from trustee Wright. See, no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee ye vote and a student advisor yes vote. 6.8, academic employee and classification administration personnel actions.
No changes and no campus conversions?
No changes and no campus conversions.
So moved.
And a motion for trustee Lang and a second from trustee Jay. On 6.8? No, because you didn't give me a sheet. If I don't have a sheet, I'm not reading it. Do I have to pull it from the exhibit?
I have it, you want me to read it out? You have it? I can read out, I have it in front of me.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's, uh, acting dean of liberal arts, Dr. DeRoule, employed as acting dean commencing on January second, ending on June thirtieth. He'll be paid at step, uh, range twenty-two, step one, which is one fifty-one, seven oh four per year on the academic classified administrators classified manager salary schedule. That's about it. Do you need more?
That's what I normally read out. She did.
Reimbursed for travel expenses outside of Orange County in accordance with district policies and procedures. And the district will provide a monthly stipend of two hundred and fifty dollars to cover use of a personal automobile within Orange County and a monthly allowance of one sixty-five to cover cellular telephone expenses.
Okay.
I think that's it.
So I have a motion from trustee Lang and a trustee, second from trustee J. Is that current? Okay. So with that, go ahead and vote on the item. Have unanimous trustee yea vote and a student advisory yes vote. Six point nine, classified personnel actions.
No changes.
No changes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee Lang. Seeing no requests to speak, vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Six point one zero, non-bargaining unit personnel action.
No changes.
No changes.
Move approval.
Motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee J. Seeing no requests to speak, vote on the item. Have unanimous trustee yea vote and a student advisory yes vote. Six point one one, bonded, says two thousand twenty to twenty-one bonded sabbatical recommendations.
Move approval.
Motion from trustee Lang.
Second.
Second from trustee Jamal. Trustee Wright.
I just wanted to say that I had read through, uh, all of the, uh, proposals and I was impressed that they were very well done. For the majority of them, they were, they made sense and they, I thought they were very good.
Okay. Seeing no further requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yea vote and a student advisory yes vote. Six point one two, adjustment in CSEA salary schedule is being pulled. And a statement from Kim Wittis. Oh, said will be announced. Like it was, okay, just pulling it. Never mind. Okay. Six point one three is a correction.
Yes, that I can read out. Uh, the correction is to the increased cost of the agreement with the Police Officers Association for the two-year remaining period. The correct cost is eighteen thousand six hundred and ninety-five. And if you see the background information, the original dollar total of three sixty-seven twenty-five was the cumulative of the whole thing. So it was just an error on the part of someone in my office.
Okay.
I, I didn't get that exactly.
So the actual cost, um, when you go for status at the end, says exhibit B.
What page are you on?
It's six point one three. It's the cover page for the item. Uh, where it says status at the bottom, where it says exhibit B are estimated to be three hundred sixty thousand seven hundred twenty-five.
Right.
That should read eighteen thousand six hundred ninety-five.
I liked that better.
I figured. We aim to please.
And normally they do a printout of corrections for everyone on the board so that we all can see it.
You just picked up the wrong line when they wrote the item.
Okay. So I have a motion from trustee J, second from trustee Lang. Seeing no requests to speak, vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yea vote and a student advisory yes vote. So now we are on to seven point O reports. No staff response in seven point one. Seven point two. Saddleback and Irvine Valley College speakers. Seven point three, facilities plan status report. Seven point four, monthly financial status report. Seven point five, retiree OPEB press fund. And now moving on to panel reports, Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Good evening. Um, I like this board and I realize you've never voted down a speaker, um, but you will not always be here. Um, and this very district has had boards in the past that have made very questionable decisions that have gone to court where the district lost. Um, I think, though, we can come to a compromise as the president of the gas has suggested. I think there is a way. Also, early in the meeting, there was a concern expressed about the conflicting president's breakfasts. We're already working with the two college presidents to have a president's breakfast and a president's lunch that'll alternate between the two colleges. And I believe it'll start in the fall. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, I don't have a report tonight. June's teaching, so she can come.
No problem.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I also have no report tonight.
All right. Vice chancellor, technology and learning services?
No report.
Vice chancellor, human resources? Vice chancellor, business services?
Quick report. Uh, just to bring the, to the board's attention, as you know, the January governor's budget has come out. And so there was a memo that I shared district-wide that has been inserted into your agenda for your information. So if you have any questions on the budget, just let me know. Uh, the other thing is we're starting the KICK cycle, so that's the capital improvement committee that, um, will be coming to the board with the recommendation from BARK in April. And, and, I know, fun.
C-RAC.
I have all the fun committees, DRAC, KICK, BARK, B Park. Anyway, um, in preparation for our KICK cycle, uh, we held a meeting, my team with the facilities team and the vice presidents for college administrative services with both campuses. So it was two almost all-day-long meetings where we kind of worked through facilities planning. And at Saddleback, we had president Stern there as well. So it was, um, I think they were great meetings and you will be forthcoming and seeing a lot of projects coming your way. Those small projects and large projects. And this is kind of like kicking off with the facilities master plan and where we wanna go. So they were very productive meetings, um, good meetings to where we're laying out timelines of when we need to go to bid, when we need to go to the board, you know, all the, the details like that. So.
Okay.
That's it.
IVC Classified Senate?
Yes, um, just wanted to bring an update. We had a wonderful, um, flex week general meeting where we had, um, acting president, Dr. Visca-Chill, yeah, help us with some campus updates. And thank you to Marsha Milchiker, trustee Milchiker for attending as well. We did roll out the, um, the IVC president search, um, timeline with our, all of our classified and letting them know about that. And we also have about ten initiatives on the campus right now that are classified or are very well in- involved with, um, including our, um, Karen Campus, which will have our third coaching session, January thirty-first, and followed with our fourth meeting, which is our convocation, where we will present our plan to administrators, uh, managers in the college community. So that's all I have.
Thank you. It looks like Darren had to take off, so CSEA president.
Due to the lateness of the hour, I have no report.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so with that, we will adjourn. Oh, trustee Whit Riddell?
This is important. Um, excuse me, I'd like to congratulate vice chancellor Anne Marie Gable. She was elected to, um, the statewide association of community colleges. That's a very nice honor, having been vice president, now president. What's wrong with you? No. No, but congratulations. That was very nice. And can I just ask, who put this together, the facilities? I don't know if anybody looked at this in detail, but it's very well done. Was it your office?
So Brandy Delena does most of the work.
Thank you.
With input from thirteen.
The layout, it was easy to read.
Good.
Thank you.
All right. Now with that, we will adjourn.